We went in a little bit over due to trying to get the system back up and running. We're gonna go ahead and get the city council meeting for Tuesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty four. To order at six forty eight. We all rise for the. A moment of silence, please. A moment of silence, please. We'll call.
Okay. Yeah, Garcia.
Yeah.
Sophie Sotelo.
Here.
Mario Rado.
Here.
We are as well.
You.
And after the LaCuenca, here. Everybody's present.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, can we go down to three? Can I get a vote on the meeting agenda? I need a motion on the meeting agenda. No. By Diana. Can you turn up the mics, please?
Also. Oh.
Hello, there you go, thank you. Okay, I need to make an amendment, she's a reading agenda. Do I do that now or after I second?
After second.
Okay, I'll second it.
There you have it. Winch by Diane, second by Sophie, all in favor?
Discussion, hang on, I need to, I'll get an amendment. Okay. I wanted to add I to the consent agenda because our special meeting we had on the twenty fifth was not included. But they're, we're told that it wasn't a legal meeting, which we're gonna have to look into a little bit more. So I'll go ahead and not add it right now, but we'll add it maybe for the next meeting after we clarify this. But I have two for the new business, I have C and D. I called to have it put in there, but it wasn't put in there. So it was Johnny Desby, talk about community days in. For the Fairness and Association.
So we can do that in the comments.
We can add it to the agenda too. Because we don't have to rush and talk away fast for a few minutes. That'd be C. New Business C. And I also like to add New Business D. To add Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero seven, I believe. Because we have one here for zero six. Is that correct, Sylvia?
Are we talking about a resolution or?
Yes, resolution.
Okay, so the resolution would be oh seven.
Oh seven, correct, okay, I put oh seven. Approving Professional Service Agreement with Law Brands of Saxon and Riley and Riley P LLC.
Anything else?
So I am. Can I get a motion now for the consent agenda?
A motion in a second, now you just gotta pick a vote.
Can I get a vote on this for adding C and D?
Wait, are we?
And I.
We voted for the meeting agenda?
You know, we're doing the consent agenda.
You haven't done the meeting agendas first.
Yeah, I, Diana, you seconded it.
Okay, that's.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, I get a motion for the consent agenda, A through I.
I also need. I also have a correction on that too, but I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda and we'll discuss it after the second. You can enter them.
No.
I made a motion to, I'm gonna make a change to that too.
Okay.
But I made the motion.
May I make a second motion on the consent agenda to change to I?
Yeah, yeah. Sorry.
Okay. From A through F, H. Which H on the front?
I wasn't. I only have G, I made a G, oh, we'll be hearing this one.
On the new one.
Oh, we're not.
So how motion bar is, you know, Sophie?
Okay, I second the motion from A to H. We have a motion, I second Diana, all in favor?
Discussion, please, vote.
Okay.
Okay, so. We found this, we say on the vouchers, Sylvia, and it's not included in the, in there at all.
At all, okay. So we'll add it.
And this one's not.
For the next one. Okay, so just pull them out.
Okay.
Just put those two through. I'm sure they're not included.
The board.
Went through the floor and another one that minute men pressed that said it was paid to, you paid cash for it and then we're supposed to reimburse you.
No, I, I will, I brought the receipt that I had to pay cash to pick up.
So they need to reimburse you?
Yeah.
It's that they were gonna pay them, okay. That's what we need to take these out.
Yeah, of course.
Anything else?
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go on to old business. Can I get a motion, I'm sorry?
We got the motion.
I got, right. Motion by Sophie, second by Diana, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go on to five old business. We have G and O, the well seven and eight update on the drilling and the funding.
Yeah, you can send it, sit there, whichever you feel comfortable with, Jamie.
Sounds weird to talk. Uh, if you need counsel, I wanted to, we haven't talked about the well projects recently and wanted to have an update and. We're personally backed on this particular project. For background, the project was, it's been in the works for a while, we did the project last spring. The contractor couldn't get to start it until the fall. They drilled an initial well at the well four site, the water quality and quantity were both very poor there. Where it wasn't usable, the aquifer there, there's southern top water in it, in an amount that the city can't miss the well. Rather than drilling a second well and having the same result, the city opted to draw, build a test well. At the sec, and changed locations in the hopes of finding water. The test well is cheaper and so it's a way to find out if, you know, before you commit to a whole production well. Build a test well at the well five site, and it was also indicated that the aquifer was not conducive to installing municipal production well at those locations. Um, this is all just a background stuff we talked about at previous council meetings that they sort of catch up. So since then, the determination was made, working with hydrogeologists, that if those locations weren't gonna be adequate for drilling the future well seven and eight, we needed to look elsewhere in the city. We amended the environmental with the funding agency and amended it to increase the scope. You know, you get the environmental area approved only a certain area and you drill wells in that area and it wasn't, wasn't gonna be good. So we worked the funding agency, we expanded the scope, we approved environmental area to include the north side of town. Worked with the hydrogeologists and they looked at the stratigraphy of the ground and it looks like, you know, northeast. The further northeast you go, the better chances you have of getting a better well. You're drilling, again, as a reminder, you're drilling in the top layer. So it's the distance between the ground surface and where the basalt starts. And as you go towards the river, that gets thicker, and so there's, it's greater opportunity for a productive well. You know, it's kind of north of Washington, you know, I've tried working with hydrogeos to try to find locations kind of north of Washington. And moving to the northeast is, is, is the direction that could be, you know, advantageous at this point. Uh, we also, council approved a change order with the contractor to add a few additional test wells to the contract. Um, the problem is we need a location to do these tests well, we've, we've talked about this before. Yeah, you know, again, big picture, the reason the city chose this, you have essentially, the reason the city chose this project. Um, you have four options, you've got shallow wells, deep wells, surface water treatment plant, or intertie with another city. And so given those options, the city is why the city chose this rather than looking at shallow wells. Um, and also because that's what that water right purchase is for, it's for that shallow aquifer. Um, had conversations with city staff, trying to identify locations in that northeast area. It could be advantageous to drill a well, the problem is it's heavily owned property there. So everywhere else you can find a city parcel to drill a test well on, but in the northeast part of town, there aren't those city-owned parcels. So had some conversations with the school about some of the school districts parcels there to see if there's an opportunity to partner there. Uh, to date, they were, you know, friendly, but we haven't gotten any sort of the A and A or, or, you know. You know, go ahead and, and at this point, you know, one of their pieces is leased, and so that's complicated. Another one, by the time the contractor could be there now, it would be a little sweeter. And so there'd be some complications there. And so, so ultimately, you know, you have options. You know, you can either continue to pursue locations in the northeast of town and if the city wants to try to identify locations, whether it's a. There's a church parcel with some space there, or a school, or a private parcel. You know, you guys can continue that process to try to, try to find locations. And we can drill test wells, that's, that's option one. Option two, you do own a piece, pieces of land in the northeast of our town. But it's this wastewater treatment plant in the cemetery. And so, you know, if you're in a conversation with Department of Health about putting a well there, was sort of a. Try to find somewhere else, and if you can't find anywhere else, talk. And so I had held off on having that conversation because it, you know, typically you won't locate a well or wastewater treatment plant or in that vicinity. A cemetery, maybe, it might be okay, or it has some additional mitigation to meet Department of Health standards and ensure the sanitary control area is maintained for the well effect. That location is selected. So that's option two. Option one is for the city to continue trying to find a location for test well. Option two is start the conversation with Department of Health on a cemetery well location, given that it's. Not optimal. Um, and the third essentially would be to just walk away from the project entirely. But those are, those are kind of your, your three options at this point. Um, you know, we've, we've, the city has been, we've helped with this. We're happy to kind of proceed with whatever option you guys want, that at this point, we're, we're kind of looking for direction on which option. Now, I don't wanna make that decision on your behalf, um, because it involves spending the city's money.
Um, I had thought about reaching out to a family that's across the street, building an empty lot by the grade school.
Yeah.
Um, they have some acreage back there and. I was just driving around out there just thinking, where could we go? And I think if I go talk to them, maybe they're willing to let us try it, see what we can do.
Yeah.
You know?
Um, yeah.
And maybe work something out if you're able to get, because it's closer.
It's on the north side of Washington? Uh, it's more, I keep trying to find spots with hydrogeologists and they're like, you know, the, the park and the habit charities, like no, too far south, gotta go to the north. But if it's north of Washington, I think that, that, that might.
Yeah, so it would be Vance and Monroe.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, and that's essentially option one. And so I just wanted to give you the options, like, you know, at this point, there's nothing more we can do on it until there's a location for a test well. And so, um, you know, if you guess what you guys wanna do, then that sounds right, we'll stand by for, for instructions.
And I'll get out there first thing tomorrow.
Yeah.
I'll too.
Sure, sure. They probably need to sign a release or something, we can figure out there, okay, we can get something that, you know, that the contractor with a test well, you know, they'll restore the site, what it was previous, right? The thing is, if that's well successful, we want a production well there, and that's when it would be more complicated, because then essentially the city would go prior to the property.
So we still have some funding for that.
For the test well, yes.
Okay.
Yes, um, for the test well, I mean, and that was the other thing. So, so I guess first of all, is that, you know, essentially you're taking option one, continue to try to find a location, is that, is that correct?
I, I think that would be best, because if we can't, we abandoned this completely, then we'll never be able to access that. Those, uh, water rights that we're purchasing right now.
Are already purchased, yeah.
Completely paid off.
Well, there was a lot of grant in that package, there was some loan, so, but it also paid for the reservoir and much water, so yes, there's some loans being paid off, but that was mostly grant, yeah. Yeah. Um, okay, that's item one. Um, the second item of this for, for, for direction from, from you guys. So for funding for the project, you have seven hundred fifty thousand to grant from CDBG, that's what's paid for everything so far. Um, hasn't, hasn't cost the city anything to date, and that's what we'll pay for a test, the next test well. You know, that will run out. Uh, that currently expires January thirty first of next year, and we've extended it once, we'll have a conversation, it's likely that we'll be able to extend it again. But, but that's, that's that funding package. Uh, you also have five hundred thousand of this county ARPA money they got from the county gave you for this project. That needs to be spent before August thirty first, twenty twenty six, so there's still time to spend that, you still have some time there. Those are both, okay, right now, your third package though, for this, for this project is, uh, it's nine hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred ninety-five, and it's a USDA RD loan grant combination. It's six hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in, of loan. Um, two hundred ninety-six thousand, one ninety-five with grant, so it's about two-thirds loan, one-third grant. That money hasn't been touched yet, that money's just sitting there waiting to be spent. Because ultimately, once you drill the well, then you have to pay for the pump and the wellhouse, and that's honestly where most of the expense is. However, the issue with that funding package is there's a five-year expiration date on that funding, and it's coming up next April. Um, and so that's, there, there are kind of two questions here for you guys. They will extend to five years, but they may not extend past five years. So the question one is, should I start the conversation with them about extension on that funding? Can't guarantee they'll give it, but I can have a conversation. The alternative is to let that funding lapse and, and look for other funding. With the possibility that some of the programs have changed now, and there may be better funding available than that package. Um, public works boards, some of the public works boards, um, packages now are up to fifty percent grant that they're offering, supposedly this was thirty. Um, CDBG has, has in the past indicated that they might be able to increase their, you know, their, you're seven hundred fifty thousand. And then they said they could potentially go above that with more grant. Um, so there are, there are other options for funding there. That could be advantageous more than you can declare funding package. The key in this is, they have a location. If, we're not gonna really be able to get more money, right? We need to say, we're gonna drill a well here, and right now, we're kind of just looking for water. Um, so I wanted to give you that update. Um, you know, essentially, we need, we need locations to be able to get other funding, but potentially, you have a location, there, there could be other funding packages that are better than the RD package. So I guess you don't have to make a final decision tonight if you don't want to, but, you know, we need to know, number one, you wanna, you wanna try to get an extension on the RD funding package? Or step back and look for. Look for other funding.
Is that one we would have to, uh, we'd be able to use until?
Right now, until April second, twenty twenty five, which isn't, at this point, with, with the waiting associated with test well, you couldn't have a well drilling equipped realistically by, by April second. So you, you, you need an extension or you need to look for different funds. So I guess what? Yeah, I'll ask. And then, and then I guess the consolation prize here, if that one expires, there are, there are other funders that may be better choices now that weren't, weren't available when we started this process.
So that one, you said it was partial loan and partial grant?
Yes.
Do we have to, if we, if we tap into, we have to use it all?
Uh, no, but with RD, you typically spend the loan first. Some funders, you spend it proportionate, you know, you know, if it's thirty percent grant, seven percent loan, every dollar is seventy cents loan and thirty cents grant. RD, that usually makes you spend the loan first and then the grant, which is unfortunate, because if you come in under budget, then you just lose grant in it.
How much was the loan again?
Uh, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand. And that is the only loan on this, on this whole project at this point. Um, and, and that's why, you know, they're potentially. You know, there could be other funding available. But I will, so I guess based on what I'm hearing, you would like to, we'll open up, you know, talk discussions about an extension of RD. Let's see where that goes. Is there? Okay?
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Questions from Jim?
Yeah, sorry.
Good question. Okay, um, I think you have any questions?
Yeah, I'd be happy if there are any other questions I can help you with.
Right, thank you, Jamie. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go on to the, the police department discussion of the block and safety cameras. Um, so, um, since Garcia is not here, I'm not certain what he was gonna say or what was gonna be brought up. So, um, we'll go ahead and we will bring that back next council meeting. Okay. Uh, we'll go ahead and go on to Z, to see update of the twenty twenty three budget. So in, in the process, um, we are in the process to hire someone, contract someone, it wouldn't be a full-time. And, um, we have, um, brought. Sylvia, that was the girl that was here, correct? Going to, yeah, so, um. We all know later on in the week if she's gonna decide to come, but she's already gone over a lot of the stuff with, um, the office staff and where to look for things. So the girls have been on it, I know, um. I don't know about Jerry, because I haven't talked to you about it, but I know Sylvia and the girls have started. So, um, hopefully she'll get back to us in a little snow. If there, she's gonna be able to come in and help, but just keep in mind that if we do bring her in, we have to sign a contract with her.
So you're talking about someone in, I think, to.
To help us with the budget. And she's already came in, she's already come in like two times already, and so she's walking us through the process, yeah, but. She needs to be here hands-on a little bit more so we can get a feel of things. But I mean, the girls have worked on stuff already, and I'm sure they're firing through you in the loop, but.
Yeah, they've given me a little bit of information, she's very informative. Uh, she is one of the main, like technicians for the main programs that we use for all of that. There hasn't been much more than a couple of, uh, books that kind of give us step A through B, where she's able to go in and teach us more thoroughly the system. So that way we can make sure we're keeping everything accounted for and everybody's accounts and everything we're doing is being tracked and continues to hold record well. So it's been a big help and it's definitely, I see something as a big benefit for us.
Yeah. And also, um, I know that our load management, here I know Sylvia, um, started in here tonight and located here. But we need to, um, reach out to them, send them an email so they can start giving us their. Their part of what they want for the budget. So, um, we'll go ahead and go on, um. To fix new business. A resolution of twenty twenty four dash zero six. Um, approving Washington State Department of Commerce and the City of Napton. Inter-agency agreement between the WSDC and the City of Napton for growth management services for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five climate planning grant. By YB Cog.
By YB Cog.
Evening, Council, Byron Gomes, the Acton Valley Conference of Governments. Um, I think there's a, a little bit of confusion on the agenda, so that the resolution is in for the climate element. Napton's already settled, or satisfied that part. It's for the periodic update grant, so City of Napton's a fully planning community under the Washington State Growth Management Act. And every ten years, there's a requirement that we review the comprehensive plan, the critical areas ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, and the zoning ordinance. To look and see if the legislative changes over the previous ten years to the Growth Management Act are reflected in those documents. So it, it's a zero match, no complete grant that the Department of Commerce provides. The City of Napton ordered to go through that process. And in pursuing that hundred thousand dollars that, that's available to the City of Napton. We are required to have a letter of support or letter of commitment signed by the executive official of the city, which is Mayor Wallace. And what's in front of you is a resolution from council authorizing her to sign that letter of support or, or letter of commitment in order to apply for that grant.
Were you all able to look at our?
When you say order of support and commitment, I did read there. Support and commitment means, you mean that, um, yes, we would like to go in and contract with you guys to go over our thing?
So, so this is, so this isn't creating a contract between YB Cog and the City of Napton. This is YB Cog applying for the grant on behalf of the City of Napton. So, once the grant funds are appropriated, there would be another resolution in front of the city for YB Cog to provide those services. Or if you wanted to use a different consultants or something, that you could choose to do that. But there, there is a deadline of September thirtieth to apply for these funds. As I mentioned, there, there's no match that's required. Um, it's, it's set aside purely for the city to update your codes. And it's, it's split into two years, two thousand twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-five, and two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-six. And the, the deadline for updating everything is June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. The reason it's split is just how the, the states fiscal years are ending.
So this right now is just to approve for, for YB Cog to apply for the grant?
Correct.
It said definitely in our notes. Okay.
So we would need to get a motion tonight, if possible?
If possible, um, if, as I mentioned, the deadline is September twenty. Which is unknown.
Sylvia, it is written in here wrong?
Yes, and it's just the letter of intent. We didn't have to put the resolution number of zero six. Didn't hardly even sign it. So it's just this letter that's attached, that's the harder to sign. It's right behind this letter.
Yeah.
I was.
Did you find it?
Yeah.
What's that?
No, he says it's just to approve for them to apply for the grant, not for the resolution, not for the stuff yet, just apply for the grant.
Right, we should have to sign this.
For you guys. Well, this one says, we have the idea, the, the stuff we wanted to look at, like the composite critical areas, zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance.
So, so I believe there were four documents that I provided, one of them is just a summary of, of what's being undertaken by this action. One of them was the State Department of Commerce letter to the city, essentially saying, yep. And then there was the resolution to be signed by council or approved by council. And then there was a draft letter in, in a format where you could add your letterhead to it.
We don't have anything else, the resolution?
We can go to this one?
Yeah, I got that one too.
Sophie, get it?
You move right here, Diane.
Well, Sylvia, these are the three that, three, yeah, that's right.
Right, you're right.
Yeah. You want, Marvin, do you want to step up here and look at your.
So this is the scope of work in the budget, and this is the letters, and then. This is the resolution here.
This is the letter that you think that's here, this one right here?
That, um, that's the draft.
That, um, that's the draft letter that was put together, yes. Just, just to simplify things. We're, we're doing this for eight, four cities, so we just kind of heard it.
Thank you. You have questions? Questions? So, if I could get a motion? So this would be the agreement, um, between W S D C and the City of Napton, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the, the letter is essentially saying that this, the city will accept the funds for the purpose of updating the comprehensive plan and those development regulations.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero six. The Resolution of the City of Napton, Washington, approving the mayor to sign the periodic update grant application to update the City of Napton Comprehensive Plan.
Motion by Sophie.
Okay.
Second, I feel all favor. Do you have a boost? Motion, Terry.
Thank you.
We're gonna go ahead and go on to, um, B have put the ordinance for, dash, what did he say? Of the City of Napton, Washington, for the annexation of property known as Castellanos.
I, I can speak to that as well. Once again, Byron Gomes, Yakima Valley Conference of Governments. So the, the ordinance that's in front of you for the Castellanos annexation is the last part of this puzzle. Um, so for an annexation, there's a lengthy process that's required where there was a hearing in front of the Planning Commission. There was a hearing in front of City Council. Once council approved the annexation and had an ordinance, it was then submitted to the Yakima County Bonding Review Board. For their review process, they have a forty five day review period where they review all of the, the legal definitions and legal description and the proposed annexation and zoning and so on and so forth. And they've completed that process. And it's back in front of council for final approval of the ordinance in order to annex the, the five acres of land into, um, city units.
Where's this moving? Uh, I still don't know.
Can I get a motion, uh, to approve, uh, B? And I, this has been going on for a couple of years.
Correct.
So, please. And I do believe it's already gone to the final commission.
Yes, yes.
It's been approved, so, um, we can get him. So, and actually, I think we had to talk about this a few minutes ago before, um, is he?
It's for sale, isn't it? He's trying to sell it?
I don't, I don't believe so. I, I think it, it's just like a, a failed safe, that the annexation was received, that, the, the property owner intends to submit a, a subdivision, I believe it was created, if it's twenty one or twenty three single family lots. It's gonna be extending water and sewer, um, to this, but that's a, that's gonna be a separate application and process that would be in front of council.
So I, I thought he was already separating it out.
Realtor that's in charge and he said yes and felt himself.
That, and it may be, maybe for sale. I, I do know that the property owner is in the audience this evening, if, if you would like for him to get up and speak to that.
Please.
But it's, um, but the, 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 I guess the action item in front of council is for the ordinance, just for the annexation.
Well, Chris, um, um, Jerry, um, the annexation for Castellanos, that was gonna be, um, how many homes were gonna be built?
I believe by one, somebody who was forty one.
Twenty one.
Twenty one, yeah.
And then we did get a phone call from someone that they were wanting to buy. Was it for that property? Because he was selling the parcels individually instead of doing a development, like?
I know, that one would be for a different property. That would be through Napton LLC.
Okay. So if, if, uh, if he's here, yeah, I think you're great. All right.
Any questions? Uh, the property is not for sale. I was getting discouraged at the beginning. It's been a process of two years. But since we're already closed, there's no reason for me to sell it. I'm gonna subdivide it. For the homes, everything's ready to go. Just need your approval for an extension.
Okay.
And also legal counsel to, under the laws of business law.
Anything else, Roger? Okay, so if we can, uh, get a, um, approval for the ordinance for it up? I made a motion for, we need to have real ordinance twenty four dash, whatever, seventy seven. That the City of Mountains in Washington, providing for the annex of property known as Castellanos. Have a motion by Diana? Second, by you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you have a boost?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, we're gonna go ahead and go on to see John Desby. Let's come up to your podium. It's your time to sign.
Good evening, Castle, uh, not a mayor. I'm here to speak on the app of the Greater Map Association. Every year we have community days that affects all the A and M and some outside communities that come in. I've never had an issue working with the mayor requesting items that we need for the event. But we're simply requesting the large dumpster that usually provide for us every year. And again, I'm assuming this is gonna happen, but just bringing it up because I have a chance to talk to you about it. Also, I do know the bathrooms. I don't know where they're at. If we can have them open, um, I think we had problems with it last year. I can't remember what happened. And then I know there's stipulations to it, right? As long as we clean it, pick up the garbage, I'm sure we don't have an issue with that. But I also heard the power and the gazebo was having issues and I don't know if that was able to be fixed, so we can.
Well, we actually, we got new power out there. Oh, you got it? The port. So we did get, um, new electricity at both parts.
Okay.
So they updated, um, electricity part, uh, box at Fazel and at the city park. So they're good to go. Um, and if you need a spider, we do have a spider.
Yeah, perfect. And I was just requesting that, like I said, I've never had any issues with you before. Getting, getting items that I asked for, for our events, so I didn't think that it's be an issue now, but I did just straight up announce you. Okay, thank you.
We face switches of real. Would that help you? It's not a priority. So we're gonna go ahead and go on to D, uh, twenty twenty four dash seven, um, council is wanting to enter a contract with a new attorney, so I'm gonna go ahead and let our city attorney speak up on that right now. Bill?
Well, I, I said this on July twenty third, I won't make any comments for my own personal interest. However, the city, as I directed that night, is under RCW thirty five eight point one, two, point oh nine oh.
He doesn't have a book.
And also.
Can you turn your mic on, please, Bill? Thank you.
There. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, the city operates under RCW Chapter thirty five eight point one two. And there's a statute, RCW thirty five eight point one, two, point oh nine. Relevant to this issue as well as point oh two, oh, of that same statutory chapter. The, I'm only here in this forum as the attorney for the City of Napton and the city is under those statutory sections. And the city is not waiving those requirements. I, I don't have anything else to comment on except, uh, I don't think I have another role in it. In this forum, that is.
Got everything though? You got it?
Yeah.
Thank you. So, um, I just want the council to know, and I'm sure Councilwoman Mary knows, um, and Diana and Vera, they know how hard it was for us to get an attorney when I came in as mayor. Um, we went a few months without an attorney because nobody wanted to put a bid in for the city. Um, I had to be calling and reaching out to attorneys to, um, apply. And, um, I did reach out to Bill several times. He was unsure if he had wanted to take the the position. And, um, I don't know why you all feel that we need to get another attorney, but he's invested in our community, he's invested in our city, and, um, he's worked hard. And he knows the city. And he knows everything we've been going through. And, um, I think to take, to change attorneys like three, almost three years later, I think that's just, I, it's crazy. You know, um, he's got a good rate, you know, for us as a city. And, um, I just want you guys to know that things are gonna go south. Not coming. But the council. So you guys are gonna think about it. So, you know. So I've been here before, so just stop.
You're right here, Chelsea.
Okay, so I think you guys, um, we really need to talk about this at the next council meeting. I don't know, I don't wanna table it. Um, you wanna table it? No, I don't.
Okay, can I, can we do it now?
Yeah.
Ready? Okay. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty four zero seven, approving the professional service agreement with law firm of Saxon Riley and Riley P L C. Whereas the City Council of Napton approves the selection of a law firm of Faxon Riley and Riley P L C for attorney services on this thirteenth day, thirteenth day of August twenty twenty four. Whereas the City Council of Napton approves the use in terms of service contracts sent by the law firm of Saxon Riley and Riley P L C. And effective immediately. Now for the seat, now therefore the City of Napton, Washington hereby resolves as follows. The mayor is authorized to sign an agreement for professional services between the City of Napton and the law firm of Saxon Riley and Riley P L C for the services at the city attorney. Passed by the City Council at its regular meeting on the thirteenth day of August twenty twenty four.
I'll send it in.
All in good?
Aye.
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 And it goes? I am not gonna sign the contract. Sorry. So we're gonna go ahead and move on.
I have another comment on that.
Want to move on?
I'm not finished on the comment here. I just hope you you show the same courtesy to the, our new attorney as you have with the other attorney. Okay?
We're moving on. Thank you. So, um, is there just comments? State your name and your address, please.
You're in on your last two, you have a second on? I have a couple of questions here for, well, one for Jameson. What's the difference in expense between shallow well and deep well? Or, uh, topical?
I mean, I, I can have the answer that council desires, but, but
but we can talk about the subject. Okay, another thing. What's the deal with, uh, I hear you guys are looking for a new treasurer. So if that's the case, what's going on with the investigation? Because nobody knows anything. Right now you're paying somebody sitting at home an administrative leave getting paid for nothing. You have a person right here getting paid for being a clerk. You have a gentleman right here filling in for the person that's on administrative leave. So like, you're actually paying three wages for one person's job. And on top of that, you're thinking about hiring the treasurer. That's another sixty thousand dollars a year. Where's all this money coming from? We don't even have a budget.
Thank you, Ruben.
I, I'm, I got five minutes. I got five minutes. So, where's the answer to that question? We're throwing money left and right. Like it's no big deal. You're creating these positions without any approval from anybody. You know, so where do you, where do you get off doing this without getting council approval? Aren't they the ones that decide on what gets spent and what doesn't? You can't just make these decisions on your own just because you feel like it. You know, you, you can smirk all you want, Rachel. I really don't care. You know, smirk all you want. I'm just stating the facts. You know, so I don't, I don't know how, what the community thinks about this, but that's a lot of money going out the window for two positions. Larry was a treasurer clerk slash clerk. One person was doing that job. Getting paid probably sixty grand, if not a little bit less. Now you got two people, maybe a third, that are all gonna be getting over sixty grand a year for doing what one person used to do before. That to me financially don't make no sense at all. It doesn't make no sense at all to me. I don't know where you're getting this money from. And I know I'm not gonna get the answers. I asked for a packet last week. I asked Sylvia if I could have a packet for this meeting. She said, yes, Ruben, I'll have one delivered to your house. She refused to do it. Why are you telling me that you're gonna do something, we turn around and you don't do it? You know, things like that. That's public information. Why couldn't I get a packet?
It was on your chair.
That's the agenda. I'm talking about the whole packet that you guys get. I have access to that just like anybody else does. And when somebody tells me they're gonna give me one and they don't, you know, that's being pretty unprofessional. You know, that's telling me that. I don't matter. When I say that, it doesn't matter at all.
Sylvia doesn't deliver the agendas.
Then why did she tell me she was gonna give me one?
I don't talk to her.
No, I'm asking her right now.
You don't ask her anything.
I can ask her whatever I want. She, she works for the city. My taxpayer dollars are paying her wages. I can ask her whatever I want, Rachel. You might treat your council like this, but you're not gonna treat me like this. Because all this is public information. You know it, I know it, everybody here knows it.
Okay, you can go and request it.
No, I shouldn't have to request it.
Who delivers them?
Who delivered me?
Officer Sullivan, I believe.
No, it wasn't. You don't even know who delivered them. You don't even know who delivered them. It was Victor.
Okay, well, it was one of the officers.
So why didn't I get a packet?
You're out of council member.
What's that got to do with it? It's public information. That's the thing about it. You do the things the way you wanna do it, and you don't care what anybody thinks. You know, and for you to sit here, and I took that as a threat to the council members that things are gonna go south. You guys are gonna regret it, whatever you said.
I didn't say I'm gonna regret it. I said we think we're gonna go south.
What, what makes you say that? What makes you think that? What, what makes you say that? What makes you think that? You don't even know the other lawyer. You've never met him. So how you know that's gonna happen? You know, for you to put the council members in a position like that, that's not fair to them.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay. Could you state your name and your title?
Katie Curer, uh, from Tejasol seven sixty, uh, on behalf of the members that here, uh, work for you guys for the city of Mapton. I'm just here to remind the council of RCW thirty-five A twelve one hundred. And we're just gonna read first, and this is the, the mayor Charlie, the chief executive and manager officer of the city in charge of of all departments and employees. So I'm just here to remind you guys that there is two collective bargaining agreements here with the city. And mayor is in charge of those employees. And if anybody has any questions, I'll go ahead and answer them, but.
Not if they're on the block here.
What employees are you talking about?
The union employees.
Huh?
The union employees.
It's all union. Not everybody's on the union.
Uh, I have the police department, public works, city hall. That's who I represent.
So what's your point?
The mayor is, is the boss of them.
What's that got to do with anything?
I am sure to say that. I have a right to speak, don't I?
Well, yeah, you have a right to speak, but what's that got to do with anything? Are you giving props or what?
I am here just to remind.
Remind who?
Whoever's listening.
She treats him like a dictatorship, then she doesn't bear.
That's not, I'm not here for politicians. I'm just here to remind.
And so you put you up to this?
The members did.
Your members? What members?
My member.
What members?
Union members.
The union members.
Touch yourself on the back, Rachel.
Hey, you're back.
Thank you, Kate. I appreciate it.
I didn't have no one to be sweet. I just wanna know, are you going live? Right now?
Agree with the system we have. We can't run two programs at the same time. The software fights over which one is going to be using the camera, so it's currently on zoom and it is live. So that is being
Live on YouTube?
On Zoom.
On Zoom and not on YouTube.
Correct, because both programs are attempting to use the same software in order to be able to use the camera. So since the programs are incompatible and unable to share the same coding, so that way they can stream, you can only do one.
Hmm, I was initially, wasn't there a resolution in the past? Wasn't there, uh, residents wanting for you to go live on YouTube because they're wanting to see the council meetings? Uh, the council members have requested repeatedly, and mayor stated that they are, but live on YouTube. And mayor did stated that there was, uh, an RCW, no, uh, um, what is it called, uh? Code? For the city of Mountain, that
Ordinance?
The ordinance, they, okay, you're right. Um, that you, that there, you guys are supposed to be going live on YouTube?
So we can't be both on here?
Why weren't we able to do it before?
Yeah, but we weren't able to get it back on. It was going, but it wasn't doing both.
We never had a problem before.
Okay, well, I think we need it.
So we are recording them, we are recording them.
Okay, whatever we need to do to get them both done at the same time.
We're recording them, and so whatever's being recorded right now, we go ahead and, um, we'll, we'll upload it onto the, um, website. Thank you.
Um, there is residents in Mountain that are wanting to see the council meetings live. Just a reminder, just a reminder to come here.
Anyone else? Okay. Bill?
Uh, no, I don't know.
Our staff reports? Do you have anything to add?
I, just to note that your street's being paved and
Oh, yeah, and it's gonna be done next Thursday, correct?
Yes, and that's my understanding. It's, it's, it's close. Needs for the initial paving, they'll probably be cleaning up. It sounds like about three weeks more potentially, but they'll, they'll be done, but I mean, it's, you're over a lot of, a lot of the concrete. Now they're cleaning up a few issues here and there.
Looks nice.
Yeah, that's looking good. Yeah, that's a a long time in the works. Yeah, it's good. So, and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
So it won't be done this week? It won't be done till next week?
That's my understanding, yes. They still need to do striping. There's still some asphalt that needs to be finished. Um, and so then there's striping, and they need to do on the road, and so that's why they're keeping it closed. Um, because you have traffic and you have guys out there trying to stride, it's likely. Uh, can be suited to that. Uh, and then after that, there'll be a few specific punchless items and stuff, they're gonna finish it up. I, I, they said three-ish weeks more.
The Greater Mass Association is having their, um, community event this Saturday. And we already had, Johnny had already talked to the the public, public works, I mean, public safety director about closing that road off for us, because this is a way for a car show. So you're saying it's not gonna be ready for us to do a car show on there?
That is, my understanding is that it's still, it's still closed, um, because they're, they're not, that, you know, it's an active active construction site, and, you know, could be some liability with that, because it's still, it looks really close, but there are still things here and there, and you know, you'd hate to open the city up to liability if you're essentially a lot of public inside of this, you know. It's, it's the engineer's job to manage the area, so it's, yeah, but it, it, it looks good, and it's gonna be a good project, unfortunately.
Any more questions, Ben?
Yeah.
Eric?
I have a question. Excuse me. I just had a question for him on this question.
Okay.
So well, Johnny, the one who was here speaking for the Mountain Community, uh, Greater Mass Association, he is, he was told that the road is gonna be ready for this week. That's what he had asked that. He didn't bring that up. So now it looks like we need to ask to get the road closed over on Bins. Fifth Street.
Yeah, well, there, um, and no opposite right here, but when we did our parade route for, uh, summer bash, we went all the way through Washington, we came up Boundary.
No, that's for the parade. I'm trying to do the car show. They need to place the park, so we need to get that fifth street area blocked off from Washington to like halfway to C Street, just that little section.
You can come and talk to me, and then I'll let the guys know.
Okay.
Anything here?
Just, I've had, yeah, I know you're, but you're insane, but I have two community people that have been trying to get some paperwork done for some time and keep getting put off. One is Tuesday was gonna say it, cause it's his son and daughter-in-law.
So we can't talk about that. I'm sorry, Vera.
He can't because he's a representative.
Yeah, but we can't even talk about it here.
I just asked if you guys could return a telephone call to him, please.
We have. They, they have. The staff has. They even got the call twice, and I
But you haven't talked to him.
No, but they've already relayed the, uh, messages to, um, the staff. So the staff is
Been said. I have to go get her. Their house has been torn down.
So, but we didn't get we didn't get notice of it till just barely, I wanna say this.
No, I've tried to bring it up before, you wouldn't let me.
Vera, we just barely had notification.
I will review.
Okay, we did.
I'm sorry. I have one more, one more time, sorry, James.
No, why?
You threw me off with the road thing.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
No, I, I wish, I wish it was.
What's always gonna be ready for this week? That's why he didn't bring that up. I have one, one more comment, um. So on the on the, on the new attorney contract, if you refuse to sign it in the American ten, in the American ten signing?
Nope, because I am here. Unless, if I wasn't here, then yes.
You don't wanna do your job. We'll have to
Bring my job.
No.
So
If we're requiring you to sign a new contract and you're refusing to, that means you're refusing to do your job.
Bill, did you wanna add something?
The, uh, statute on mayor pro temp said with the mayor in the stands and probably if the mayor's at
Also, they refuse to do their job. That happened one other time, and she refused to call, but called a question. Very much, I mean, all I had to, had to do.
Thing that we have a conflict of interest right now with this lawyer actually pushing that.
Also, I like
Hours of, of a mayor pro temp, so I'm, I'm referencing the content of the section, so.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and
I'm gonna finish it. Sorry, one, I'm not finished with that same con, uh, question. So, would Mr. Riley like to be introduced? He is here today. I want you to introduce Mr. Riley. Hi, Mr. Riley.
Good evening.
He, we, this is, um, Mr. Riley, who we elected, uh, me, I'm, uh, I'm your city attorney.
I'm already. There you are?
Yes.
Yeah, I see.
And then, so Mr. Riley, we have a contract here. Do, do you wanna sign it, or when can we get that done?
As soon as possible.
Okay. We have it right here.
We're gonna go ahead and adjourn this meeting at seven forty-nine.
You wanna recuse yourselves, you can. Now, if you'd like to recuse yourself, you can.
No, I am not. I'm not gonna give you the satisfaction.
Okay, then don't, we can adjourn it.
Actually, I did wanna add a comment, but thanks, Mr. Gomes, for his help with the annexation.
I just take it over there?
Okay, attorney's fine.
Information that we need to put that together.
The attorney's talking.
We're doing our thing first before we got, if we wanna talk.
Well, you always wanna talk, so you're gonna wait.
Professional.
Very, very, always.
Go ahead and talk, Bill, mister.
No, I, I was just thanking Mr. Gomes of White Dog for the information he gave that we needed to put the uh, ordinance together for the annexation, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Riley, do we need to have everybody else sign it too?
We will, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we're gonna adjourn this meeting at seven forty-nine.